We're not giving away anything today.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 4th Bruce Township Planning Commission meeting. Our meeting start time is 7:05. Dana, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Vincent?
Here.
Cupid?
Here.
Agastin?
Here.
Camps?
Excuse me?
Chapman?
Here.
Burnett?
Here.
We have a forum. And so for the folks in the audience, this is a public business meeting of the Planning Commission, but we welcome comments to help us at various points in our agenda. If you haven't signed in on the sign-in sheet along the wall, please do so. And that gives us a record of who was here. Now, there aren't many folks here tonight, but we ask that you do that anyway. The commission is made up of seven Bruce Township citizens appointed by the elected board. In addition, we have a township employee, Dana Buchanan, who's on my far left, and she assists us with the recording and the meeting minutes. And as a former planning commissioner, she may be called upon for some experience that she has from some prior issues that were dealt with. To my far right is Joe Tangeri. Joe is a professional planner for Giffords and Webster, and he will assist us as we go through the various issues. And there are opportunities on our agenda for public questions and comments. Generally, we ask that be limited to two, three minutes. As we follow these guidelines in our various meetings, big meetings, small meetings, we find that that makes the best use of time if we follow these. And one of the others is, I don't know which agenda items you folks are for, but when you come to the microphone, keep your comments coming to the Planning Commission, not interchanging or exchanging back and forth between people that are not on the Planning Commission. Makes it a lot better for all of us. So with that, I'd ask that you rise with us, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item four on our agenda, and I guess everyone has seen the minutes, but any changes or questions regarding anything from the last meeting?
Questions, page four, bottom. Quadrate private road. That was a conditional approval, and I'd like to know what happened with the fire chief approval when the with wasn't known.
Yeah, I put my request through to the chief. I expect him to answer you.
Pardon me?
I put my request, your request, through to the chief for an answer.
You're expecting a direct answer from the chief to you.
I asked.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's what I asked.
And we don't have... How many times have you followed up with this?
Just, I just emailed him the one time.
I suggest you follow up. Thank you. Page five. Joe researched solar power. Recommended inviting the CBA and the board. Not sure what that means. What are we inviting them to?
The very last page. We talked about having a discussion about solar power. And then, did you ever watch that link from Row?
Did not.
The last, the last meeting they had, they talked about solar power, and there were some very interesting things about how you're taxed on real property and bonds for when the people just skip and leave you with a mess. There were some interesting comments, and I didn't know. We get letters, calls, people knocking at our door all the time, wanting to put solar in, and we don't want it, but I didn't know if you might...
Solar power on your farming property?
Yeah. Because up in Goodrich Township, they denied because they, the Planning Commission, I forgot what their reasoning was, if it wasn't necessity. They were talking about 1,000 acres in the solar panels, so that's why I said...
Okay, so I'll redirect this back to the minutes. Not sure what was meant by their comment. Is that we inviting them to a meeting that Joe's gonna do? Because it's not clear right the way the minutes are written. That's the only comment I have. That's a discount that solar power is not important.
Yeah.
But I'd like to get...
No, I realize what you, what you mean.
Yeah, I can re-listen to that portion of the meeting.
Yeah, so just fix whatever that is, because the minutes become the formal, permanent record, and when I was reading this, I'm thinking if a third party reads this, they're not gonna know what that was. And I'm not sure what it was either.
Well, that would be changed eventually, so approving the minutes and this being put on hold.
Yeah, postpone.
Postpone.
Because we don't know what that is.
I'll make the motion to postpone the approval of the minutes for this meeting pending additional information that Dana will surely get that taken care of.
Or maybe another alternative would be to approve them with Dana making that question, because it's not huge, because it wasn't a decision, but it's more of a clarification for anybody reading it. Joe, your thoughts?
I...
On the minutes? It's a minor correction. Can we approve it with a minor correction, even though we don't know exactly what it is?
We'd have to re-address it in another meeting.
Yeah, I think you might want to see what...
Okay.
Says, because she can go back to the recording.
Second your motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Cupid's made the motion to postpone the approval of the minutes pending other information that's required. Seconded by my Tremblay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the agenda, we have a light agenda this evening. I'm curious if anyone has any changes you'd like to make to the agenda or make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Cupid, seconded by Tremblay to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item six on our agenda is public comment. If you are here for the public hearings, item seven, A and B, this is not the portion for you, but if you are here for items of general planning questions, questions for the Planning Commission, now's the time to do that. Otherwise, we'll move on to our next topic.
Give us your name and address.
My name is Jeff Miller. My address is 26591 Harvest Drive, Chesterfield, Michigan. I own American Gymnastics on 32 Mile and Romeo, Washington, in Bruce Township. And for several years, we've looked at expanding and building our own location rather than leasing a building. I didn't want to move far from the corridor we're in, and over the years, there hasn't been anything that's really fit our needs as far as size, or cost, or function, or ease of entrance and exit for our customers. And a year or so ago, we got really deep and heavy looking into a building, and then we decided to put it on hold. We have about five years left on our current lease on 32 Mile Road, and I came across this piece of property on McKay and 33, and I had seen it before, and it had said that it was residential, but then I saw an asterisk that said it could have a potential commercial use. And that property would potentially be a great option for American Gymnastics to put a flagship location out there similar to its location in Chesterfield Township. Here's a little bit of...
Just stuff you can make copy and sand it out, or keep it, or whatever.
I'm here tonight because of the zoning. I've gone through this process several times. We helped Washington and Romeo write the special need use requirements for...
Before you go too far, can I ask a clarifying question to you?
Yes, sir.
You said you were looking at 33 and McKay?
Correct.
I know both of those south corners are zoned commercial.
Northwest corner.
Oh, you're doing the northwest corner?
Yeah, 6.4 acres, says it only has 3.5 buildable acres on it. There's a new subdivision being built just even north of that.
That's commercial.
Is that commercial?
On this northwest corner is commercial, yeah, because there was a consent judgment done on that many years ago.
There was, okay.
And there's, it is, there's, south of that residential development, part of that was, I think, five acres if I'm not mistaken, it might be off by how much, but there is some commercial property available at the northwest corner.
Okay.
Of 33.
And I put the packet in there, the address and the property, and maybe it possibly is, like I said, the limited information that I had...
Did you talk to anyone at the township?
I talked to Mike briefly to, well, right before Christmas, and he said I should come to this meeting and propose this possible use for the property. I went through, I went through a process in McComb Township many years ago, and it dragged on for 14 or 16 months, and we spent a lot of time and money and energy, and then they just kind of said, nah, we don't want you here and close the door. So I want to work with the township. We're close, we're local, and if it'll work, let's take the next step and see what we have to do. If it won't work, you know, I'll look elsewhere and see, you know, eventually if we can find the right piece of property. We're not in an urgent position to move, but I don't want to just put an industrial building or a warehouse building there. This would definitely be a, you know, a state-of-the-art gymnastics facility with, you know, elevation and, you know, beautification for the community, not just, you know, a steel pole barn out there. So, like I said, I just wanted to present this opportunity and see, you know, if it is a possibility, what are the next steps that, you know, American Gymnastics would have to do to possibly follow through and see about doing this? We would like to make an offer on the property if necessary contingent upon approval, so, you know, that's kind of why I'm here tonight.
Were you in here before, maybe a year or two ago?
I was not. I believe this is the first time in here, and it's a beautiful, beautiful township hall.
Called somebody in here about something similar?
Yeah, there's a couple.
Where the...
This is the...
Last century was in there.
We, well, on 33 Mile Road, Roger Walker owned a piece of property, and Pat and Roger were trying to get us moved out of our building on 32 Mile Road, and I wasn't moving on their terms, I was moving on my terms. Like I said, I have five years with, well, I have four years with three years of an extension left on my lease, so I'm not in a rush, but if I could secure the property and do the building, you know, right, and, you know, in the next few years, be ready to make that move, I, you know, I'd be in the position to try to, try to move forward with that.
Joe, you know, I think that's property is zoned C2 if I'm not mistaken, right?
As far as I know, what the consent judgment says is that northwest corner is C2, yeah.
So would C2 allow for something as the...
Child activity center?
Yeah.
Recreational use?
So, looking at C2.
Does the developer that did Cloverleaf, whatever, own that also as a zone?
Yeah, the developer's selling off lots to builders.
And that was just a rough drawing, like I said, of a use of that property that I put on the graph paper, just to kind of show, you know, approximately a 36,000 square foot building. That's what we have in Chesterfield, is a 36,000 square foot facility, and this area is growing, and I opened, we've been out here for almost 20 years, we've been waiting for this opportunity. And, you know, that location would be a, be a great entrance exit in addition to, I think, that, that area out there without putting it too, too much in a high-end commercial or industrial type of use. What moms in the neighborhood don't want to have their kids ride their bikes to gymnastics?
Kids probably don't want it.
There's a lot of sidewalks are put in.
Is it because it's wet? Is that because, is that why only half of it is basically...
It has, it has, it has...
There's a pond?
Yeah, big retention ponds on there. The retention ponds are already in there, and then the setbacks and utilities and the road frontage and stuff, so it's been reduced. But again, in that, in that rough drawing that I did on the graph paper, you know, each square is 10 feet, so, you know, I have it 80 feet kind of off of the road of McKay and, you know, plenty of distance to try to set the setbacks and...
Yeah, we're not gonna talk about setback. We're just seeing if that's a probable use.
How big would your facility be roughly?
I would, I would like to build like around a 36,000, which puts it at, you know, four and a half percent land ratio, so, you know, it's not a bad fit. Plenty of parking.
Want to say this or no?
So, health establishments, I guess, is probably what's all under...
Under what?
Physical health establishments.
Probably.
We have a cap in the C2 on the square footage. That's of course something we can always look at. 36,000 is over the cap, but that's not necessarily that you could...
It's not necessarily a showstopper.
Yeah. So I think that there's a possibility in there. Certainly the use...
So my recommendation is, don't buy the land yet.
Like I said, this was not, not in, I, last year when we went through with Roger and Pat, I, I said, guys, I, no. And I backed off, and then, like I said, I just happened to be fine, I came across this, and I walked it, and I looked, and I went, how have I missed this? This is right in my backyard. This is perfect for what I've been looking for. Like I said, as far as not moving far from where we're at and not moving far from that corridor. Yeah, we'd be going into Bruce Township, but I still think that this would be a great addition to Bruce Township and, you know, look forward to it.
Northeastern is also zoned C2.
Is it?
Yeah, across, across...
Well, my thought was is that this one was six and six, and we have just under six acres in Chesterfield with the 36,000 square, but that was deemed R and T back when it was originally developed. It's now M1, so, but I, the, the size for that lot and the uses for that lot seems kind of limited for, you know, any type of residential, or weirdly retail shop, or 7-Eleven, or gas station on that roundabout or something, and I kind of was like, you know, with this type of facility, it would add, you know, an elevation to the landscape and not be something that denigrates the landscape or degrades it, and, you know, be a children's facility, and trust me, I want to make sure it's a, you know, gorgeous, beautiful facility for, you know, everybody in the area to use. So if it is a possibility, then, like I said, what, what is my next step?
I think I understand that we do have currently a cap on the size of the facility. What is the cap?
5,000 at the moment.
Oh, that's small.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
And I'm, and I can leave you my name and phone number if anybody has questions for me, and like I said, we're not planning on doing this in the next week, but, you know, the sooner that we could maybe come up with a resol, you know, potential resolution, the sooner we could, you know, secure the property.
What was the description of the, for 5,000, with the 5,000, yeah?
Physical service, or physical health establishment, sorry, under 5,000 square feet.
And there would be like a gym or something like that?
Yeah, exactly, a gym, or certainly gymnastics would fit, or a dance studio, there's all kinds of things that could fit under that.
Could we, could we make a request to have you look at what maybe some of your other clients have with respect to that?
Yes.
Because, I mean, some of our ordinance, we haven't visited in a long, long time. I know we just recently updated our industrial district height, building height ordinance to become more competitive.
Which is what?
Forty feet, forty...
Oh, good. No problem.
Thirty or forty, that'd be a forty, right?
I would build a building current, similar to the building we have in Chesterfield, which is a 20-foot, you know, 18-foot ceiling height on the inside, 20, 21 and a half in the middle, you know.
Yeah, that's funny. I think ours was related to the modern warehousing that they do today with the highest shelf.
That one picture that I put on there, the bottom one with the blue and white building, is 179, that, not that building itself, but they're building one just like it next to me. It's 179,000 square feet. Yeah, it's huge, and it's got those big, high walls and skylights in them and stuff, so.
So the right thing for him to do is to follow up with Dana?
And Dana's our planning and zoning coordinator. She basically runs the office over there with the supervisor who raised multiple hats. I don't realize Dana lies in Dana's house.
Should I keep these and...
Well, is that your only...
They are, but I get on a plane tomorrow, and I'm not in a rush, like I said, on this project, so if you guys need to keep them, review them, have questions or anything, like I said, I've gone through the process a lot in my head and on a lot of scratch pieces of paper without putting a, you know, legitimate dive into it, but, you know, I have a lot of the answers probably floating around.
So today our ordinance would not allow you to do that?
Absolutely.
But we're, Joe's gonna do some research and see if, what, what others...
Or what workable solution maybe we have, or like you guys said, if you have another similar property across, you know, maybe that's an option as well.
We're not recommending one of these. We're aware that that's not the only piece available, too.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe for your benefit, if you can see who's giving you the better deal.
Well, I, I was, with Roger, I was looking at a 10-piece parcel down there where they put the plastics place on 33 Mile Road, across from TRW.
On 32 Mile Road?
33.
33.
Sorry, yeah, 33, about halfway down there, across kitty corner from the old folks home. What's back there, the builder, the guy they put the lights in? On one side, they have the...
Raoul Lecter?
Yeah, right in the front.
Raoul?
Yeah, yeah, right on the, the front of that, on the, well, west side.
But he's gonna have the size cap on either property, right? So that's really a...
Yeah.
Parcel aside, I guess, to answer his question, if, what would his, what would the process be if he was to buy a piece of property? What does he have to do?
Well, I definitely want to make sure we can do it first.
Right, and the ordinance changes. Or you can wait and see if Joe comes back with something that gives us an answer that we might be willing to look at changing that.
Yeah.
So if you signed in, did you, did you sign in?
Yes.
Okay. Name, address, and phone number?
My personal name and address, yes, I didn't put the business, if you want me to put that.
If we were to try to reach you through Dana, he needs to be able to reach you through a phone number.
Is it on any of that paperwork?
I'll give it to you.
And did you put that on the paperwork?
I can, yes.
I mean, on this, this paperwork, if he put his personal number.
Yeah.
How many square feet did you want? What were you talking about?
There's a facility we have in Chesterfield, it's 36,000, indoor square footage. I was looking to do a similar sized building. I think with the growth and the expansion in this area that I, you know, seen happening in the corridor and everything, that, that, you know, that facility is going to be maxed out, you know, it's going to be fully used, I'm not going to say it's going to be overstuffed, but I don't want to cram, you know, 10 pounds of gymnastics equipment in a five-pound bag either, like have a little elbow room.
Yeah, 36,000, what are you... Yeah. Thirty-six thousand, what did you say the cap was? Five?
Five.
Five?
It seems very small.
Big difference, too.
Small store front is what it allows.
It's like, it's like an anytime fitness.
Yeah.
Would be five hundred square feet.
Yeah, like a little Pilates studio or something like that.
But arguably like in a retail space.
Right. Yeah. I think it anticipates it going into a planned shopping center.
Yeah.
But suffice it to say, it's, it's the beginning stage of what you would like to do. We have work to do.
Absolutely.
We'll be in contact with you through Dana, once Joe does his review, and then more dialogue will ensue.
Excellent. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
You have five years on your lease. Government works slow because of transparency, and there is not a CEO that says thou shalt.
When, when I moved into Thirty-two Mile Road, there wasn't even an ordinance for what I do in Washington and Romeo. And during that period of time, one of the meetings fell on Columbus Day, one of the meetings fell on the blackout that we had that took everything out. Another meeting happened, more than two board members were, we went four months without a meeting. Four months without a meeting. I was like, come on. Trust me, I am well aware. That's why I want to try to get this process started now and, and as quick as possible.
How many years have you been there on Thirty-two?
Uh, well, we started construction in oh-three, and we opened in June of oh-four.
Okay.
So, you know, nineteen years of, of open service there. In Chesterfield, twenty-one. So...
And my kids have utilized it.
I've been there with my grandkids.
And, and I'm a pretty proud owner. I mean, I, I like my facilities to be professional and, and well-kept and clean and, and whatever. You know, if you've ever traveled or looked at other facilities, you can definitely find some that are not quite the same. And like I said, this location, I think I would, I would, I would put a Taj Mahal-style gymnastics facility right there on that corridor. So, again, thank you for your time.
I want to see that Taj Mahal.
I'll save it.
You got my number?
I do. I have a turn of your originals.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. I coached a Coupet's once.
Say that again?
I said I coached Coupet's.
Oh.
They were Olympians.
Yes.
Do you know them?
It's my cousin.
Ashley and Courtney?
Courtney, yes.
Yeah? Yeah. I was originally from Virginia, Richmond Olympian.
Ah, okay. Yeah, she is...
Boris and Larissa Shukin, so I learned how to coach.
Their sister are coaches at, somewhere in Georgia.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. She's the head coach at Georgia, yeah. No, uh, my coach, not in a row. My coaches were brought over to make Olympians. They made Olympians, and then the owners decided not to do Olympic. Followed through, so they moved up to Kelly Hills up in Maryland and then...
Well, safe to say that part of the family got all the talent, and I'm sitting here in a chair.
Thank you, guys.
We're going to send them to the chair.
Okay. Item seven, public hearing. Charles Smith.
Yeah.
I'm going to just put him in, please. State your name, address, and talk about what you would like to do.
My name is Charles Smith, and my address is seven oh-nine four one Van Dyke, Romeo.
Can you kind of highlight or summarize what you would like to do with your...
Oh, um, I would like to open the business over there, like a spa rental, so people have a small get-together or training class or workshop or whatever.
Would you be doing anything other than renting the space? Would you be catering or anything?
No, I don't sell anything.
So it's just to rent this?
Yeah, only rent those space, like, uh, yeah, instead of long-term, I do the short-term, that's all. I don't sell any food or drink or whatever.
So they would bring their own food or...
Right, right, right.
So the only thing you're looking for is you give them a space to...
Right, yeah. Because some people, they need to play to have a training class or, you know, a small family get-together, something like that. So they can come and rent the place, and then when they done, they leave.
Almost like a hall rental.
What are the hours of, are there standard hours that this would be rented?
Uh, standard hour?
Yeah, can it, can you rent it at 2:00 AM or is it, um...
Uh, some, they come at early in the morning, eight, nine, ten, something like that. Usually they rent about a few hour, like a five hours.
What's the latest you would envision having this business opened up? In terms of hour of the day, ten o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night, six P. M. Latest activities allowed?
I, I don't know. You tell me. If you, you, you guys say, okay, um, only this time, this time, you know. Some they have a, you know, they, they want to come late, like five until ten, something like that.
Okay. All right, I think we have to open the public hearing.
Yes, formally open it, yes. I'll, I'll move to open the public hearing at seven thirty P. M.
I'll second.
What actually, you know, it's, it doesn't, yeah.
So, Mike Trumbull made the motion, Dana, second by Connie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I, I make a motion to close the public hearing at seven thirty-one P. M.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mike Trumbull, second by Connie Chapman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Reason for my closing is because there's no one here.
Yeah. So we can... It's just something that we need to do as part of our, the way we do things, and there's no one here. Many times, there are a lot of people here. We give them the opportunity to talk and ask questions. So where we are now is it's come back to this group to ask you questions and get information from you and tell her, tell you what's on our mind. Okay?
It's just procedure. We have to do that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Commissioners, or I'm sorry, Joe, your thoughts and comments. You and I had a little bit of discussion.
Right.
Listen.
So, um, they're proposing to occupy a space in that Orchard Plaza, Thirty-three Mile in Van Dyke. It's an existing shopping center. Emmett's is a big user in there. And, I'm not actually proposing to do anything external. They're just, it's just the space itself. I put some, I won't read them, but I, I put some online descriptions of the business that I found in a letter so that, for your benefit, so that you could see what they, how it's described online and the marketing. Banquet Halls is the closest thing we have listed in our ordinance to what's being proposed here. It's a space rental. They're listed as special land use, subject to four forty-eight, which I've got in the, um, letter below. It's at the front of the shopping center, so it's kind of like the front corner. You have Emmett's, then there's one other little space, and then there's this space on the corner, and then the facade goes back, and there's a bunch of other little things in there. So, section four forty-eight says a banquet hall is located in multi-tenant shopping centers have to provide adequate parking for the use of maximum capacity. That has to be demonstrated on application for special land use approval by showing the parking required for the rest of the center and the parking provided. And you and the board can approve it if you find that the hall can meet the parking requirement without, without encroaching on the rest of the center's parking spaces. So I don't have a parking analysis for the site. The space in question is twelve hundred square feet. The main room is eight hundred square feet, and it's been determined that the maximal occupancy is fifty-three people. That's per the fire department's inspection paperwork. So planned shopping centers require one space per a hundred fifty square feet of floor area. Center has about forty-five thousand square feet of floor area. And parking requirements are calculated on the basis of ninety percent of the floor area intended for service to customers. Of a typical planned shopping center, you generally estimate the customer service area to be about seventy percent of the total floor area. So you do all the math, and it comes down to something like a hundred eighty-nine spaces. But I don't know that that's a one-hundred percent accurate number. There, it appears that Emmett has, Emmett's has a fair amount of warehouse space in the back. That would significantly lower the overall retail square footage. So we have to get some more information about that to know if the parking requirement is met for the site now, and if there's an excess or anything like that. The, the user, the use itself requires a space for two people under maximum occupancy, which would be twenty-seven spaces. So you'd need two hundred sixteen spaces based on the math that I've done. The real square footage might be lower, might be higher. Again, we don't know. And I don't know how many spaces are on the site either. I, I did do a little bit of aerial counting, but it's really hard to tell on aerials how many there are because it's just hard to see on the concrete. It's, the paint is, is pretty faded. So I, I'm really not sure exactly where we stand as far as that standard is concerned. So I, I think that's, from a zoning perspective, that's my major question is, is does it meet that standard?
Okay. If there's any questions for Joe, if the petition is?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
More for Dana. When I was reading this, there was a, uh, Bruce Fire Department inspection. Have those items been addressed?
What, what did he have locked? This is a paper that we got quite a while ago. Was it in January twenty-two? This first came on the, on the agenda, and we were given this paper then. The thing I don't like is that there's not a date on here. I pulled one out from January that we were given, too, so...
So this might be newer, but there's no...
Well, no, I think it's the same.
It says one twenty, twenty-two.
Give them to him?
Copy to Whitkin.
Yeah.
Yeah, one twenty.
See, they should date these things.
He is not...
Dana, what we're talking about, Dana Whitkin. I asked you to file with the chief. I want you to let the supervisor know, too, that you're not getting any response, because that's, that's not acceptable. Thank you.
But, yeah, we, we, those three items, we have not revisited to recheck those, that I'm aware of.
What's that?
I'm not aware that we rechecked for those, those three items.
Can the applicant address on?
Do you know what we're talking about, Joe? There, there's three items. When the fire department came out, there's three items here that Mount Fire Extinguisher...
Oh, I did already. I did everything already.
Okay.
I, I told him I did it. I called him.
Okay.
Isn't there supposed to be an official final report to say that the things have been taken care of?
It's because...
And then I have a problem with this other piece of paper. We have mechanical permit, all this stuff. You have dates all over the place. You have one, January twenty-eighth, nineteen twenty. You've got one from five sixteen, five nine. And I'm looking at all these things, they don't make sense. It says, final inspection about in the middle of the page, locked out, no key in box, locked out, no access. So did they ever get in there to do these inspections?
The, I know that...
I mean, a lot of stuff on here, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, normally I don't include, include all of the details of it. But I did get the letter, the letter after that from, from our building official that...
I mean, all these dates don't make sense, and nothing says there was a final inspection.
Right, right here. Did you get this letter?
Yeah. But that one says, well, no improvements have been made. What does he mean by no improvements made? Because this is not the way this building looked inside when Cup and Cone was there.
I don't think he means...
Or the dress shop. So, yeah, I, that's what I don't understand, no improvements made.
So I would, I would presume that there's no improvements that would change the character of this to...
Like knocking out walls or something major like that?
Probably nothing that required improvement.
Okay.
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, I just don't like all these dates and no answer. No final inspection.
Well, that's what this letter, that's what this letter...
Okay. Do you own this building or does someone else?
Uh, it's, it's from my mother-in-law.
I'm sorry, what?
My mother-in-law.
Your mother-in-law owns the building?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, has there ever been an occupancy permit issued?
Uh, excuse me, what'd you say?
Do you know what I mean, Dana? There was supposed to be an occupancy permit issued, and this was discussed a year ago in January.
Oh.
When this first came to our attention.
Uh, the fire department, he came out and he say maximum is fifty-three.
But you have to be issued a permit, I believe, from the township. Occupancy permit?
I'm not, I, I don't know.
I don't know. Is that true for banquet facilities, or is it just true for residential?
I don't know.
Yeah, I, I would think that a fire department inspection and a building inspector inspection without knowing it would be inadequate.
Would be the adequate.
But I think the question is, though, that the Bruce Fire Department should actually do a second visit there and verify that what they found before has actually been corrected.
Right.
There are a lot of things here that just didn't make sense to me. And another thing, um, when Joe wrote down the description, summary findings, I guess, is there page two of three? When you describe what was on, online, I guess, space rental for workshops, birthdays, showers, funeral, meetings, personal use celebration, training classes, small but cozy, family atmosphere, entire unit of twelve hundred feet, perfect for groups, but it says unlimited parking, that is not true. And when you move down, it's entry on receptionhalls.com classified it as venue type slash banquet hall comma townhouse. It's not a banquet hall and a townhouse. Two totally different things.
There's no question. I don't think...
I think, I think the suggestion is that on your, um, your entry on receptionhalls.com is a bit misleading from what you've, what you've told us, is that it's not a townhouse.
You know, um...
And it's not of our allowance.
You know, some, some, sometime they, they have, they, they make you click in there. So it's, it's, it's go to advertise, you know what I mean? If you don't click anything, they don't let you next, next, next. So I don't know, you know?
So it's an online system?
Yeah, it's an online system. Yeah. If you don't click in there, they don't let you keep going, that's all.
Yeah, I think their description that she has, you can bring in your food, drinks, extra decorations. It doesn't say you can live there.
No, but on Airbnb, it is listed as a long-term stay load, twenty days or more.
Oh, no.
That's on Airbnb. It also...
What's the date on that? Is it recent? Right now?
Right now.
I know.
The amenities listed on Airbnb also include bed linens, pillows and blankets, shampoo, conditioner, hair dryer.
No, something wrong. Something wrong.
People aren't allowed to stay.
No, 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 no. Some, something wrong. I fixed it already.
Well, who did all this? Where is the picture of the, where is the bed? All the picture? How'd all that come about?
You know, um, my, my father just passed away, and then I put some his personal stuff in there, that's all. And, and that, and that the, the, the area for my office, like I work with the computer.
Well, where'd the picture of the bed come from? Well, where'd the picture of the bed come from? And it's listed.
I, I, I don't know.
Somebody did this and.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't know. And I, I, I don't rent long-term at all.
Well, I can't, you can't have a bed in there and a meeting space and whatever. And it's not a townhouse. There's just too many things going on here.
Okay, it, it, I think it's some, 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 some wrong advertising and then I will fix that.
Okay. Well, are you the one that lists, who listed it on Airbnb?
I think my, my daughter, but somehow, you know, she make it wrong.
Well, it's not, if you want to be the meeting space, you can also be a hotel.
I know, I know.
So it should have never been put there in the first place.
I know. That's it, that's it, the mistake.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess we have some description problems here and.
I have a question for you. Who would she work with hand in hand to try to clean this up? Would that be Dana? Would that be perhaps someone from the planning commission and volunteer to work with her to kind of put some better shape and form together? Or is that just not, not the way to do it?
I'd be happy to, if that's, if that's the case, I'd be happy to.
You, you are on the planning commission. You understand what everybody's saying. It's, I mean, it's usage is too vague. It has a list of 10 things and that doesn't match what's out there. And it all has to be together. Otherwise people are going to have in the back of their mind, they're getting the silly opposite, right?
Well, that's just not right. You can't be a meeting room, a hotel room, it's not a townhouse. All this needs to be fixed. And all the different places where this is advertised, on Airbnb, it's on Craigslist, it's on Facebook, and it's all wrong. So something needs to happen there. And I believe Mike asked you last time, are all the, the bills paid for this building?
That's not my.
Is there a water sewer? I thought Mike asked you to check on that last meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that, did you pay that?
Yeah, last time they, they, yeah, they send me the bill, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So we do or do not know the bills are paid for sure?
Yeah, I, I did pay already.
Yeah, I don't have the proof, but I was there when, when she was at the window paying, to pay the bill.
Okay. So you saw it happen, so at least for me, that's good enough. We have time to double, do a double.
Yeah, I do have to get.
Yeah, just for the planning commission, then there are some issues with our sewer rigs and that we're, are being discussed at the board levels. Some of the inequities that have been borne by some people in our commercial district.
Right, that's, that was part of the.
That was part of the discussion, yeah. That's being worked on separately.
Was that a matter of first, you had to classify the, the business and what it was called and what it was doing and that kind of thing?
Well, some of the businesses that are classified, they're, they have very low water usage or very use, low sewer usage, but they're being built as if they have a higher usage than what was anticipated. So there's some complications that we're dealing with at the board level. And with board just sanction the study by plant oriented work and water sewer, that should be done within 90 days.
Okay.
So for the purposes of the planning commission and the zoning ordinance, which is what we're really dealing with here.
Right. I think what I've heard is that a more well-defined description of the use that you can rely on.
I don't have a problem with this if it is the, the meeting room for workshops, birthdays, all that kind of stuff. But you cannot say unlimited parking. You cannot say it's a townhouse. You cannot advertise a picture of a bedroom on Airbnb, you know? That's what I have a problem with. But I don't have a problem with this is all that happens here.
Right. So I think, I think we want some assurance that that's actually the case and then.
They can only perform the things that were okay, not.
Right, exactly. So you're, you're, you need to be able to put some parameters on your special land use and you need an accurate description that you can rely on.
Including hours of operating.
Yes, exactly. To put those parameters on whatever your approval recommendation is. And then there's the parking question as well. So I think that for the purposes of testing ordinance compliance, that's really what we need is those two things. And then of course, there's other things that may need to happen, but that's really what we need to know.
And did you say, when you did the calculations with all the other businesses that are here, it would take a total of, did you say 212? Was that it?
It's, it's 200-ish. I'm estimating based on.
The use of the buildings and all that?
And based on measuring the building, you know, on Google Maps.
He said possibly lower based on the actual retail versus warehouse footage of Emmett's.
Emmett's, I think probably has a lot of space that would be classed as warehouse.
Yeah.
So my guess is it's lower than what I estimated, but I didn't want to come out with a low estimate.
Well, and as, as far as when this was, shopping center was built, quite a while ago, I'm sure. I mean, does the building department ever have a record of how many spots were required?
Assuming that we've got the site plan on file, we.
I mean, is that where you would find the?
Maybe digitized.
Yeah.
Parking spots available?
You should be able to see what the square footages were and what the parking was.
And what they were told they had to have, how many spaces? That kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so can I talk because you know, the, it's got the condo, it's called condo bylaw, you know? It's not a site, any parking. It's a area unit can park anywhere. It's not like a site, I have one or two or three spot at all. They say all the units, like a A units in there, they can park anywhere. You know, that's it by law.
That's not our question. The question is, do we have enough parking spots for yours business and all the other businesses there?
When you say something like unlimited parking, you don't have the use of the entire parking lot because there's, whatever I commented here, eight other buildings, businesses, whatever. So you can't say unlimited parking because that whole parking lot does belong to you. You can't infringe in front of the other.
Somehow I misunderstood for that.
You can state parking is available.
Okay.
Outside.
Okay. So what, whatever you guys want me to fix it, you know, I will fix.
I'm ready to make a motion unless somebody else wants to.
I do have a question, Joe. So is the primary question around the parking spaces? Cause I thought before there was an ordinance that it couldn't be in a retail.
That was changed.
That was already changed.
What about hours of operation?
Hours of operation, we don't have anything specific to that use. We do have our, you know, quiet hours in the township, but I think that there are other businesses in there that likely would be open until 10. 10 or 11, I think would be a perfectly reasonable time to be open until birthdays like this on, in a shopping center. And there's other activity around, so.
And then the question that pops to my head is it's a party, right? They're probably bringing in some alcohol. Could be, may not be sold there, but they're going to bring some.
Walk next door, party store.
Yeah.
They won't let the drink and drive.
So the hours of operation, I would assume could or should be limited, given that area. I mean, the machine is closes at nine o'clock or whatever, sometimes earlier. None of these businesses are open till one o'clock. Sure. And there are some residences north of there and south of it. So I'm looking for, is it reasonable for a planning commission and ultimately board to limit hours of operating?
Yes, part of the special land use approval, yes it is.
Can we, you brought up a comment previously about a bed being in there. So what are the conditions? Would be no sleeping?
Yeah.
Wherever that bed was in the, I don't know, I've never been in that building. Upstairs or downstairs, it's gotta go. You can't, it's not a bedroom. It's not a hotel. Can't have a hotel and a meeting room, so if there's one in there, it's gotta go.
Can I say something? I think as far as the hours, we'll make the hours. I don't know what time the other things in that shopping center are open, like the Vandy.
Vandy.
It's 11. It's 11. Yeah, the liquor store, the party store.
I don't know, I would specify that there can't be a bed in there. I would say no overnight, sleeping.
Well, if it's a meeting room, why do you need a bed? It's not a hotel room.
No. You know, it's, it's the area to do business, it doesn't do anything with, with the other area at all. The, the area for the meeting room is, doesn't do anything with the other room. The other room because it's used to be, it's, it's used to be the, the small kitchen from the ice cream shop. And then we don't do anything, just still there, that's all. And when they have a, they have a event in the area, they usually close the door. Yeah, it's, it's got the, the door in there.
You can't, I won't, okay. A meeting room, I don't have a problem with all that. But the bed and advertising like this, it's no. You can't have a meeting room and a hotel room and a whatever, so you can't have both.
Yeah, yeah, I will fix that.
And one thing that I'm, I'm hung up on is the broad list of things that could be there, like small events. What's a small event? What's the definition of a small event? To me, it's six people. To you, it's 10. To someone else.
I would suggest that would be up to the maximum capacity.
Yeah, fair, right. You've got a maximum capacity, you have 53 people.
And that is on file with?
The fire, fire department.
Yeah. Okay. And the other thing is, at the party store, and I go there occasionally, and I don't see people hanging around outside. With these kinds of events, I'm a little concerned, a party turns into more than.
Something outside of the sidewalk or whatever?
That's, yeah, one of my concerns is meetings, fundraising, virtual working, seminars, workspace, personal day use, social spot, social spot, what's that? Family gatherings, training classes, there's, it's very broad.
But you have to have another thing in there, no loitering outside? Your meeting is inside the.
That's already covered by the law.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they, they wouldn't be allowed to loiter? Okay.
Enforceable by.
Law enforcement.
Okay.
We don't contract with, we don't.
County.
County.
Yeah.
County attorney.
Okay. Like you said, you were ready to make the motion. Any other discussion?
You can also have a discussion after a motion is made in a second. I'm going to make a motion to table this issue to address the following five items. One is hours of operation. My suggestion is that they be 8 to 11 p.m. Number two, that the advertised use of this be consistent with what's being considered. Three, that a parking analysis be concluded. Four, that there's verification that the department, fire department issues have been resolved. Number five is that there would be an absolute statement in the special land use regarding overnight stays. No overnight stays. And Dana, that's up to you, if you want to work with the applicant to, to work these issues through. My recommended hours of operation, that would be 8 to 11.
Is that 8 a.m.?
8 a.m.
11.
11 p.m. And that would table until the next meeting. And whether we get responses back or not, we will vote on it at that time. So we don't, sometimes we, we table things and then the applicant doesn't come back. So lesson learned is, I would say we do it the next meeting and regardless of what comes back, we'll vote on it.
Make an decision one way or the other? Yes.
Everyone okay with that?
That's okay. I'll second his motion.
Okay, there's no questions. Any question? Motion made by, by Tronley, seconded by Concham. Dana, can you follow the roll, please?
Benson?
Yes.
Cupids?
Yes.
Haggles King?
Yes.
Shetman?
Yes.
Burnet?
Yes.
And Trumbull?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Putting on my phone. Wrong papers, I'm. There's just too much going on. I didn't realize how many times this had been in front of the board until I read the annual report and saw how many times it's been talked about.
Okay, Dana, so you'll follow up with her? Okay. Okay, next item is a tree preservation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're the, you're the petition.
That's right. So yes, looking at section 520 in the zoning ordinance, which deals with preservation of ordered areas. We were looking to make it a little more functional, I guess, cause right now it's, it's a very rarely enforced portion of ordinance. Applies to a very limited set of properties. And, and we were just looking to make it work a little better. And what we've done is we tried to keep it very simple, but we are requiring some level of tree replacement in the event of a large amount of tree removal from a property. So if you're removing more than half the trees on a site, you have to replace any of them that might be regulated in excess of 50%. So you have, you have to have an inventory of those trees. You have to say how many trees in excess of 50% are going to be removed. And then that number times two is the number of replacement trees that you have to put on the site. And that's basically it. It's, it's, it's not really all that complex. But any questions or comments? I'm happy to discuss them.
Joe, I review it. I think it's consistent with our discussions and with the changes that we have recommended we made. So I'm good with it the way it sits. What we do, if we have a public hearing, I'll open and close with just for formality. So I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for tree preservation ordinance amendment at 8:05.
I'll second.
Motion by Mike Tronley, seconded by Concham.
I can make a motion, we close the public hearing.
All in favor.
I'm sorry. Jump on the gun.
I was about to ask. I can do it.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Concham. It's up to you, Concham.
Make a motion, public hearing is closed at 8:0.
What'd you say?
8:06.
8:06.
I'll second.
Close the public hearing before you open it.
Hey, I'm trying to speed things along. We don't like those late, late meetings.
Don't waste time, okay?
Take care of business.
I'll make a motion to approve or to recommend to the board that they approve the amendment to the Bruce Township zoning ordinance regarding the tree preservation.
Motion by Tronley, second.
I'll, I'll second.
Seconded by Concham.
I'm a roll.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nays? Opposed? Nays? Motion carries. I'll get you a notice of adoption for, so that you got it ready to go. Okay, item number eight, we need discussion. Joe, anything for us?
Um...
It's reviews?
Reviews.
No.
Uh, we do not have any reviews.
Okay. Uh, communications, number nine, anything from your own?
Uh, I'd be interested in hearing a little discussion of what you discovered.
Well, the best thing for you to do, though, is to watch the row. Dana sent you, did you send the link to everybody? Not just me, right?
Yes.
Um, because we couldn't attend that meeting, so they had the link where you could watch it.
So you didn't grab any nuggets out of there?
Well, there were some interesting things that I never thought about. Um, and one was the fact that you can do a 30-year lease with these people or whatever it might be, and all of a sudden, things aren't going well, like the marijuana things. They're not all making money, and they just pick up and leave. And do they leave you with all the hazardous solar panels and things and wreck your property? I mean, there are a lot of things you need to consider. And like I said, up in Goodrich Township, that's North Emily City, uh, their planning commission turned down company. It was like 800 to 1,000 acres they wanted to put into the solar panels and... So I don't know. I guess the first thing, maybe go watch that meeting from row on the solar and... Say what you think.
Remember who the email came from?
Well, based on your...
Came from Dana for the link?
Yeah.
Oh, it came from Dana.
Based on your view, you know, do you think the township should take any action to this time?
Well, I don't know. That's what I'm saying. Um, I forgot what, the planning commission in Goodrich Township turned it down because I think they had the right to do that because they said it wasn't necessary, or that kind of thing. I think that's how they turned it down, but...
That's not for individuals on houses, though. It's, I mean, it's...
No, this is, these are the big solar farms that are coming. Well, like, there's one on I-69.
So I guess if you've been approached, then you may not, you may not be the only one who's been approached.
Oh, I'm sure every, there's anybody with large acreage. In Bruce Township, Lapeer, anywhere, they've all been approached.
So a question for you, Joe, just not to catch off the cuff, if you know, if there's any type of, uh, planning commission or board review regarding solar, I mean, does it take a special land? Use, I mean...
At the moment, restrictions are pretty... We're not covered with solar energy in our zoning ordinance.
At all.
Yeah. Um, I have language that I have developed for other townships that I can show you. If you want to review that particular language at the next meeting, I could provide it.
Are you familiar with the case that Connie referred to?
Uh, a little bit, yeah. Yeah, I, I know a little bit about it. And then, of course, I'm familiar with the, the installation outside of the pier and a few other large ones throughout the state. I also, back at the Michigan Planning, uh, Michigan Association of Planning Conference, attended a whole thing on solar, and I've got some notes from that I could share with you as well. Uh, so I could put together a memo. Uh, it can, it can include some information, like what constitutes the minimum size for a, um, commercial solar power installation, uh, and what that might be in terms of acreage and, and kilowatt hours. I can, I can tell you both, uh, 'cause I actually specifically asked that question at that, uh, that presentation. Um, and then I can show you the language that I developed for another township. Um, and you can take a look at that and see what you think of that. And that would get the ball rolling, I think.
I believe in this row discussion, another item that came up, these people didn't realize they were gonna be charged, uh, as, on their property taxes, uh, real property or whatever. They didn't, they thought it was just give me the money and...
Ah, gotcha.
There's more to it than that.
Taxes on real property improvements.
Yeah, yeah. All of a sudden, you've got a property that's, that has a different tax status, uh, because it's producing power and...
And income.
And income, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you add that to our, to our agenda next month? Joe, do you have time to do some?
Yeah, oh, yeah. It's not gonna take very long for that to get to the back either.
But, yeah, that link was sent by Dana to watch that, that meeting.
September 19th? Oh, uh, September 12th.
September 20th, was it?
Fall.
Oh, wow.
Just went to Senate.
It was titled, hmm, "Fall CES Presentation."
There was multiple topics, right?
Yeah.
But solar was...
But that was the big one.
For you.
That was the big one.
Okay, I have a check mark next to number nine.
Oop, I got, uh, communications to share. Um, some of you know that I've made a couple of presentations at the Washington Township Planning Commission. They had, most recently, they had a request to rezone some property on the north side of 32 mile road, um, south side.
South side.
I'm sorry, you're, you're correct, south side. South side of 32 mile road, abutting the, um, Cusick Lake Woods. There was 35 acres there, and the developer wanted to put in 27 homes, rezoning it to higher density than what's currently zoned. So they were unanimously denied at the planning commission and subsequently unanimously denied at their board of trustees to follow. So, um, but what's going on in addition to that is Big Red's has been out of business for quite a while. It's been sold. There's 47 acres that were sold, and, um, I've had some discussions with one of the owners, and, um, understandably, he's not able to share exactly what his plans are. I don't think he quite knows exactly what he wants to do there, and, um, it's probably appropriate that he doesn't provide a bunch, a lot of speculation commentary at this point. But, you know, we, Washington is our neighbor along 32 mile road, and what is allowed there has an effect to Bruce Township residents as well. Traffic especially, and, um, and also make sure we mitigate potential nuisances. Big three that always come to mind to me are lighting, noise, and odor. So, um...
Traffic.
Traffic, yeah, exactly. So I'm gonna try and remain in communication with, uh, the developer, and I'm just asking for the board members to consider, um, kinda keeping a watch on this themselves. Go ahead, Dana.
I have something to show you. I don't know if you've seen this in there.
Uh, yep, I, I saw that.
Okay.
Yeah, it says here, "With much, much anticipation and great excitement, we are extremely proud to announce that Big Red Orchard is here to stay and under new ownership. The new owners are young, local Washington family who is eager to restore, revitalize, and expand the orchard with its endless possibilities." So...
Where is you reading that from? Off Facebook? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, they have a sign on their building down there.
Yeah, so, so again, currently undetermined, and so, you know, I hope that everybody involved works together to have the best outcome for everybody involved. So, but again, I'm asking for the commissioners to consider keeping a watchful eye on this. And so, you know, planned right. I mean, once, once the decisions are made, you can't shove the water back out the river. So, um, anyway, I'm available to discuss offline if anybody would like to do that, and, um...
When was that property zoned, Big Red?
Primarily R1, which is a different, it's like an extremely low-density designation in Washington Township, whereas R1 here is actually kind of smaller lots. Um, but, uh, there's a little chunk of Big Red zoned A1, which is their agricultural designation, and that was rezoned back in like 1990 or something, uh, because...
But they also had buildings, their restaurant or something.
At the time, when they first founded it, that R1 didn't include any agricultural uses in it, um, but, uh...
There's a 10-acre pocket there, uh, the 47 that they, they zoned from R1. They have an A1 district.
Okay.
So A1 is, is higher density.
It is, yes. Yeah, then R1, yeah.
The only thing I wanted to add is that I put in my calendar all the recurring meetings for the village of Romeo, as well as Bruce, and also, uh, adding Washington. I mean, it doesn't take much effort to go into their websites and find out what's on their agenda. As an example, Village Romeo, they're gonna be discussing sewer rates tomorrow. So, you know, again, try to stay ahead of the curve. So appreciate your consideration.
I heard Washington Township might be recruiting you to be on the planning commission.
I would say they have a supervisor or something who's going to audit.
I say that just...
But you know as well as I do, Mike, as a result of doing this job, you're just, you're part of the rumor mill.
I, I think Rick's efforts over there steered them in a direction that they weren't headed in originally. Rick actually took some personal time to help them out with understanding zoning versus, uh, master plans and some stuff. So I, I know he spoke a couple of times over there, and actually, uh, it was heading one way, and I think you influenced going in a different direction.
So, yeah, I'd like to think that, um, I had some effect on it. But there were other people that provided some compelling testimony as well. It wasn't just me. So, uh, anyway, I, I think the correct decision was made. That's all I've got?
Okay, question?
Joe's not ready to hire you yet, though.
You say you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Andrew Harlow. I think you were gonna be doing some work with him.
Yes, um, yeah, we had a, a subcommittee, and I think I communicated back to you and Randy as, as well, and we were not taking any action at this point in time because Jeff Fritz called me, and he said that Andy's rethinking his strategy, what he wants to do there. So details to follow.
Okay. Okay, anything else under either communications or unfinished business?
I do, now that you bring that up, it, it brings an interesting question. So the applicant will have the opportunity to revise his application for the planning commission or vote on the original one. He's not here. Should we add that on the agenda? Because we, that's still an open issue.
What's the, um...
It was a rezoning.
Time, I thought we put a longer timeframe on it than 30 days.
Did we give him some, a chance to like...
Oh, go later than the March meeting.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was...
I said corrected.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought we put a limit on it, but not...
March meeting. Got nothing said about the March meeting. If you don't, you were on the, you were on that little subcommittee, right?
Right.
You might remind him that if, if he doesn't do anything, we're gonna vote on it in March.
Okay.
Because he's paid an application fee, right?
Correct, yes.
How much is the application fee?
Uh, for that, the rezoning, right around $2,000.
Oh.
Oh, that much.
Sure.
Very nice.
Okay.
Let him know.
All right, I know. Yeah, okay, I'll take care of that.
Okay, if there's no other unfinished business?
I, I do have a question on unfinished business. We had always agreed to keep 5G on the agenda because there's a moratorium with the township. We just don't want to be excited. But I would suggest that in future meetings that we include 5G on here, regardless if we have updates. Just keep it on the agenda.
So will you really take it off? I thought, I thought last time you...
I think it was in the, the last minute.
I don't know. We discussed it.
It's reasonable to put it on.
I think we should just leave it on, whether there's updates or not, just so it shows that the township's still...
Does anybody have a problem?
I mean, the moratorium doesn't really mean much because you can't provide what the federal government says.
Yeah, it takes all of 30 seconds if we don't hand it right. Okay, we'll move on to number 11, new business. We have an annual report that everyone's received in the week.
As usual, the annual report summarizes, uh, the business of the planning commission in the preceding year, and, um, if anybody thinks they've spotted any errors or, uh, items that could use a little more clarity, um, open to suggestions and questions.
I was just surprised on reading the annual report on how many times it has already been talked about banquet facilities.
Bank facility...
Kicking the can down the road.
156 West Gates show up on here a lot.
And then, I don't know. I already discussed this. May, on May 4th, the very last sentence, Nickbada Corus Lavender Farm, the very last sentence, uh, the number of sheds available for sale on the property was referred to the township attorney. So I didn't know if there was ever a set number decided, or if nothing happened there, or I wasn't really sure of the answer.
I know the assessor's office went out and did their year end, and apparently they counted them up, and they were 18. And that, I'm told, is, is part of what becomes something that's taxable. It's not...
Well, when he was here in May, I think I asked him, "Would you be willing to downsize and not have as many?" And he said, "Yes." And he did sell some, but now they're restacked.
This, this might be self-correcting now, if Dana's statement is correct.
If he gets taxed out of the building?
On the square footage of the buildings on there, he might be motivated then. Unless sales are really good, then he might want to rethink how many he's got on his property. So it might be self-correcting.
I guess, just like the solar panels, self-correct and, uh, taxes on real property that people didn't expect, so.
Well, if we're gonna do something with the, uh... Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Long term.
Normally what we do, this is more of the new commissioners who haven't been on here, uh, given some demand, who hasn't been on here for a year. Every year, we do an annual report, which is a summary of what we did. And what we do is we recommend that we provide it to the board for the review. They don't, they don't accept it or anything. We just provide it to them for the review, so they have a summary of what we did.
Does it get discussed there?
No.
So they...
It gets presented.
...chance to read it, ask a question?
Yeah. There's, there's usually not a whole lot of...
Um...
You might get one question at the most.
You might want to add a sentence on the very last page, November 2nd, second bullet. Planning commission established final motion to recommend approval or denial of the requested rezoning. 156 West Gates would be at the December meeting. Do you need to add to that? A letter was sent to the applicant stating a decision was gonna be made one way or the other?
I don't know that it matters one way or another, but I could do it.
I mean, I don't know if that just helps...
I think that was in the, that was in the minutes.
Clarify things that, um, that he was sent over.
They were in the minutes in November.
Yeah, I bet if you only had that, I can...
And it talks about the 5G. It just says, "We talked about it again."
Okay, um, I think 12.
Probably still have to do something with 11. So I was explaining to Amanda, so I'll, I'll make a motion that the, uh...
Can I say one more thing? In the December, uh, public hearing held on amendments, blah, 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 blah. Get to the end. No, wait a minute. It's the wrong one. Dedicated sales office. You might want to add this sentence. It's just recommended adoption of the amendment, and really, the reason was because it was mistakenly left off when you did the clear zoning. We didn't do something new. It's because it was forgotten, mistakenly left, left off, so it was added. It's because it was forgotten, mistakenly left off, so it was added.
Where are you looking at?
Second bullet on the December 7th, talks about the sales office. To prohibit dedicated sales offices, planning commission recommended adoption of the amendments, and they did, but it's only because it was mistakenly left...
That clarity needs to be there.
Left out when they did the clear zoning. Yeah, just to clarify, it wasn't new, it was just fixed.
Dana, I can make those revisions tomorrow. Can I do it now?
Yep, I think so.
All right, I'll make a motion that the annual report, Bruce Township Planning Commission 2022, be sent to the board for their review with the adjustments as discussed. I'll second the motion. Motion by Mike Tronley, seconded by Cupids. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Nay? Motion carries. Okay, item 13, anything additional?
I think it's 12.
All committees and consultants.
I don't have anything else to add. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dana.
I already provided the committee comment.
I have three things. And this is more to just keep the planning commission informed of recommendations that we made to the board. The 156 Gates rezoning, that we had recommended denial of the rezoning request, the denial was accepted by the board, so the zoning request was denied. The sales office amendment was approved by the board to no sales offices in multi-family residential districts. And then I have questions. On the annual report, typically annually, we would revisit our goals. I don't know if there was an intention to do that. When's the last time we did? We do them annually, at the same time.
I think this time we did it in April.
Or April, that we finally accepted in the end of this year. Yeah. So you give it your intention to visit them? Yeah, it was April, April 1st. That's all I have, thank you. Okay, anything else before I go to number 14? Okay, make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is over.